I hereby call this meeting to order for the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, January 24, 2017, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:35 PM. Board members present are Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mrs. Vicki Morgan, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Mrs. Maricel Kiana, and myself, Nelda Sullivan. There are no board members absent. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting is duly called and that notice of this meeting was posted according with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation will be led by Mr. Marshall Kendrick and the pledges will be given by Mrs. Vicki Morgan. Would you please stand?
Pray with me. While we come to you today thankful for this district, we thank you for our country. We thank you for the major change that has happened in our country. We thank you certainly for in it, calling prayers of your people. We thank you that if we go forward that we know that everyone in this district is working as hard as they can to make our children's success. We pray that all decisions we make as a board and as administration will be the type of information and then programs and things that will make that happen. We thank you for the dedication, for the love of kids. We thank you for the way you watch over our district. Pray for those who stand in our place, all the first responders, no matter where they are. Be with them and their families, watch over and protect them and keep them warm if possible. While we just thank you for the day and we thank you for your love for us. Amen.
Amen. Say the pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We don't have any policy to be discussed today. We will adjourn to closed session and personnel will be discussed there. We will adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. Section 551.071 to consult with the district's attorney concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district, under the code of professional responsibility, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act, when the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated denigration or a settlement offer. Section 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene in open session at approximately 7:00 PM. The board will reconvene in open session. We're delighted to have such a large group of you here tonight, and I'm sure that some of you are here to celebrate with your students as we're so pleased to recognize them. And so we'll start out with special recognition and Dr. Powell will handle that for us.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. We are honored tonight to honor our AP Scholars, which many of you are here to celebrate with. We have 288 Pasadena ISD students have earned the designation of AP Scholar. AP Scholar with Honor and AP Scholar with Distinction or AP National Scholar by the College Board in recognition of their exceptional achievement on college-level advanced placement exams. This past May, the district high schools administered over 5,966 AP exams to 3,045 of our students. And in addition, eight Pasadena students were named AP National Scholars. These students took a combined total of 107 AP exams, earning qualifying scores on all exams taken. The students who we honor tonight are recognized as an AP Scholar with Honor or an AP Scholar with Distinction by College Board. These students are currently enrolled in various high schools around our district. Students named as an AP Scholar with Honor must take a minimum of three exams and score a three or better on a five-point scale. The students named as AP Scholar with Distinction took a minimum of five exams and earned at least an average score of 3.5 on all exams taken. The Advanced Placement Program offers students the opportunity to take challenging college-level courses while still in high school and to receive college credit for successful performance on the AP exams. We're pleased tonight to have Arlen Williams, Director of the State and District Partnerships for the College Board. Where is Ms... All right, if you'll please stand and be recognized. Thank you for being here. We are very fortunate to have Ms. Williams, who serves as our liaison with the College Board. So it is now time for a representative from each high school who will come forward and introduce their school's honorees. And the first school tonight presenting is J. Frank Dobie High School.
Good evening. At Dobie this year, we have 12 AP Scholars with Honors or AP Scholar with Distinction. So our first one is Asia Davis. She's planning to attend the University of Texas at Austin next year. Next, we have Charis Pham. She's also an AP Scholar with Honor and also planning to attend UT Austin next year. Our AP Scholars with Distinction are Derek Nguyen, who's planning to either attend the University of Texas or Rice University. Our next AP Scholar with Distinction is Steven Nguyen, and he's hoping to attend MIT next We also have Adam Padilla, who's planning to attend St. Mary's University next year after he graduates. And our last scholar who could be with us tonight is Grant Wilhelm, and he's planning to also attend the University of Texas at Austin.
Congratulations.
They're gonna do the whole thing.
Okay, very good. PHS then.
I'm Charlotte Young. I'm from Pasadena High School, and tonight we have Noah Wade. He is our AP Scholar with Distinction. We have two, and he's the other one was ill tonight. Noah, when he graduates, plans to move on to MIT and major in mechanical engineering with a touch of aerospace.
Joining me.
All right, good evening. I'm Amy Duke from Pasadena Memorial High School, and we had 10 AP Scholars. Our first one is Blake Hindsley, the Scholar with Honor. Andrew Mendoza, Scholar with Honor. Teresa Nguyen, Scholar with Honor. Anthony Pham, Scholar with Honor. Sherwin Philip, Scholar with Honor. Zachary Schwartz, Scholar with Honor. Mason Davis, Scholar with Distinction. Laura Rosso de Vida, Scholar with Distinction. Sonia Roy, Scholar with Distinction. And last but certainly not least, TJ Williams, Scholar with Distinction.
I'm Allison Luallan, and I'm going to present the scholars from Sam Rayburn High School. The first is David Chapa. He is an AP Scholar with Honor. He's been accepted to A&amp;M, UT, U of H, Clear Lake, and he is waiting to hear from MIT this month. He plans to major in computer engineering. Next, we have Catherine Portillo. She's an AP Scholar with Honor. She plans to attend Sam Houston University and major in biology. Next, we have Miriam Sliva. She is an AP Scholar with Honor. She's been accepted to U of H and HBU and plans to major in environmental studies. Next, we have Kelly Villarreal. She is an AP Scholar with Honor. She has been accepted to SFA, U of H, UT, and A&amp;M. She wants to go pre-med or major in business. Next is Samantha Amiskita. She is an AP Scholar with Distinction. She has been accepted to A&amp;M and Notre Dame. She will attend Notre Dame on a full scholarship. She has... She plans to major in environmental engineering. Next is Laura Garza. She's an AP Scholar with Distinction. She's been accepted to A&amp;M and awarded a $60,000 scholarship. She's going to UT and will major in environmental engineering. Good choice, Laura. Next, we have David Martinez. He is an AP Scholar with Distinction. He will attend A&amp;M on a $31,000 scholarship and is majoring in computer engineering. And last, we have Damian Tello, AP Honor with Distinction. He plans to attend U of H or UTSA and major in business.
Hi, I'm Paula Ballou, AP Coordinator at South Houston High School, and we have five very distinguished students with us today. First, we have our AP Scholar with Honor, Mr. Francisco Acosta. He is my 11th grader, which means he passed all of those exams last year in the 10th grade. And he plans to study some sort of engineering, not quite sure on his college yet. Next, we have Angel Ruiz, who is also an AP Scholar with Honor. And Angel is planning to attend UT. He is in the top 10, and he plans to study mechanical engineering. Our AP Scholar with Distinction is Marlene Carrillo, and Marlene is going to UTSA, and she's going to study environmental science. She's in our top 10, and her passion is art, but she is going to study environmental Another AP Scholar with Distinction is Omar Daher, and he is in our top 10. He's either going to attend UT or Rice and study chemical engineering, we think. And last but certainly not least, because as of today, he's number one. I don't know tomorrow, they're getting their new rankings in homeroom, but Albert is confident. So we have Albert Garza, who of course passed five tests. He's an AP Scholar with Distinction. He also loves choir. He's planning to attend UT and study computer engineering. And now, would all of the parents of all of these wonderful AP students please stand up in the audience? If you're a parent of one of these students.
And as they walk off the stage, I know that you parents are so proud of these kids. This is an outstanding honor for them and well-deserved for their hard work.
Lots of parent hours put in making sure they study and stay sane while they're preparing themselves for these rigorous exams and courses. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Board members, we have another student that we want to recognize tonight, another accomplishment. So I'm going to introduce Tammy Lawrence May, our PISD Social Studies Specialist, and she'll come forward and talk about the contest that this student won. And we're also going to hear later from Laura Gomez, who's the principal at South Houston Intermediate as well. So Tammy, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, school board members, and Dr. Powell, it's with great honor that I recognize John M. Reyna. He's a 7th grader from South Houston Intermediate. John was named one of the top runner-ups for the Save Texas History Essay Contest from the Texas General Land Office. The essay contest encouraged students to answer the question, what history in your community or in Texas is worth saving? The Texas General Land Office Save Texas History Program is a statewide initiative to rally public support and private funding for the preservation of 35 million documents and maps on Texas. The Save Texas History Essay Contest is in its eighth year, and there were 400 7th grade essays submitted, and John's essay was one of 10 recognized across the state
Good evening, school board members and everyone in attendance. I'm Laura Gomez, campus principal at South Houston Intermediate, and this is Amy Schultz, our Texas history teacher that teaches John. It is with great pleasure and honor to say a few things about Matthew... John Matthew Reyna as his campus principal. John is described by his teachers as the perfect student, as gifted for his age, a student that possesses high work ethics and responsibility, a student that is very well-liked by his peers, a great team player, a student that is very proud of his community and the great state of Texas. His teachers also describe him as quiet or the silent type. However, he never goes unnoticed. He is the only 7th grade student in the first violin section in chamber orchestra. He is in all AP classes. He is an all-A student, which is difficult to maintain, as you know, at the secondary level, having all AP classes. He is a true leader and a role model for the rest of our student population. As John progresses through Pasadena School District, we should look... We should all look for John to do great things in academics and future achievements in high school and beyond. South Houston Intermediate takes great pride in all that he brings to our campus and district. Congratulations to you, John and Mr. and Mrs. Reyna, for such an outstanding accomplishment. And I would like them to go ahead and stand at this time and be recognized, if you don't
And John, if you'll come forward.
John, they would love to congratulate you. When I had him in my office the other day, I asked him for what was it that he wanted that he wrote about, and it was about the Astrodome. And he expressed how meaningful and how passionate just when I interviewed him, he was in regards to truly preserving this historic place that we all love. So, thank you. Thank you for having us.
We love to recognize students in Pasadena ISD, and we have so many great students doing... Can't speak tonight, doing so many amazing things, and teachers and administrators across the district. But as you may or may not know, January is Board Appreciation Month. So that makes it a great time for us to join other districts across the state to honor our Board of Trustees, which in my opinion is the best board in the state. So join with me. And I didn't just say that because they're my bosses. Honestly, I can say that with no reservation, and I'm not the only one that thinks it. And we have a short video for you tonight that will show you a message from some of our stakeholders. We can get them all, but we'll go ahead and start it at this time. And we're having a sound issue. Our screens died out on us just recently, and that's hence the reason for the large TV screens that we brought in from another department. But we're going to try this again because it's worked numerous times today. There we go. So again, I just want to add that we're blessed here in Pasadena ISD to have board members who truly care about the needs of all students across our district, even when they're faced with inadequate funding or changing educational programs and systems. They have consistently supported innovative programs, again, for all of our student population. Just a few examples are our Connect Personalized Learning. Also, that's at 10 campuses. Our state demonstration being named that for blended learning under Raising Blended Learning Initiative. The successful implementation of the one-to-one wireless internet towers at 15 facilities, securing over $42 million in high school scholarships last year, earning multiple state and international business awards for financial transparency, securing over 27 grants totaling $8 million for district programs last year, a high school graduation rate that we're proud of and still working on at 89%. Pasadena Memorial being named one of the best high schools in America by U.S. News and World Report, and Pasadena ISD earning a Met Standard Accountability Rating for all campuses, with eight of our campuses receiving every possible distinction designation that they could earn. So these are just a few of the examples of your accomplishment. The list goes on and on and on. Honestly, I can say that this is an amazing group of folks, and even though you may know that they get voted in and elected by the people in our community, they do not receive a salary. That may be news to them, but they get zero dollars and zero cents for what they do. And they put in countless hours to help us and to support us and better our district. They've labored over budgets, programs, resources for our students, competitive salary, and positive work environments. So they're role models, not only for me and for our staff and our students, but our community members, and that's why they've earned the reputation that they have in Pasadena ISD. And I just want to say, as a new superintendent, I could not thank you possibly in this short amount of time for what you've done to help guide me in the sense of what we can do and achieve. There's great things ahead in the future for Pasadena ISD. So I thank them for being the people that they are and having the talents that they have and the love, the heart, for children in this district. So on behalf of the students and staff, I want to say a heartfelt thank you, and I want everyone to join me in honoring our wonderful Pasadena ISD Board of Trustees. They don't like this kind of attention, but this is the month, so... We also have with us, just to continue with this celebration, Mr. Derek Darnell. Where is Mr. Darnell? He is the district director from Senator Garcia's office, and he's here to say a few words as well to recognize our Board of Trustees.
Well, actually, I brought a video message from Senator Garcia, so let's go ahead and play it.
Great, thank you.
And I also have a proclamation from Senator Garcia.
From Senator Garcia. Greetings from the Texas Capitol. As you may already know, January is School Board Recognition Month in Texas. It's a time to thank every school board member in our state for their service and unbelievable dedication to the children of Texas. Now normally, I like to present a proclamation to the Texas Senate on this occasion. But because I'm in Austin for the legislative session, I repeated this video from the Capitol that would make sure that every board member sitting in front of you knows how much I value their service. These board members are unpaid volunteers who have decided to take time out of their already busy lives to take on the immense challenges of running a school district. They serve out of a commitment to the principles of all children who are successful learners. They work tirelessly with parents, educators, and the community to create a solid foundation and vision for public schools. Ladies and gentlemen, these public officials have worked diligently to improve the lives of schoolchildren in the community and are truly deserving of recognition. Now I will fight hard this legislative session to secure more funding for public schools in Texas, and will always focus on classrooms, not bathrooms. But I know that no matter what happens in Austin, there will always be exemplary leadership at the local level where things really happen, right here in Senate District 6.
This is a proclamation that's been presented from Sylvia Garcia, who represents our district in the Senate in Texas, and we thank you very much. She's very dedicated to public education, and we need... in the Senate in Texas. And we thank you very much. She's very dedicated to public education, and we need all of our legislative members to be dedicated for our public education in Texas.
Well, that is all of our special recognition that we have this evening, but we will move on with our agenda. We just, again, say a heartfelt thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Those of you that came for the recognition are free to leave, if you'd like.
I think they're gone.
Or if you'd like to stay, we'd be delighted to have you and listen to the business of the district. And continuing on with our agenda for today, we have no public comments. The next item is the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Roberts. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. The motion is passed. The next item is the Personnel Section. Ms. Morgan, would you take care of that?
Yes. Madam President, I move that we approve the Personnel Section, addenda pages A through D.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing none. The motion's passed. Would you name those individuals?
I certainly have that privilege. David Henderson, is David here? David has been named Coordinator, Systems Administrator. Congratulations in your new position. Do you have family with you?
Uh, no.
Okay.
More family.
Congratulations. Laurie Pruitt, is Laurie here? Hi Laurie. Laurie has been named Assistant Director of Purchasing. And we congratulate you in your new position. Do you have family with you?
Wow.
Very good. Congratulations. Next is Sarah Burke. There she is. Hi Sarah. Sarah's been named Assistant Principal, Sam Raven High School. Congratulations. I see you have family with you.
I do. I have my husband Josh, my parents, and my mother and father.
Awesome. Clinton Robert Hopper, is Clinton here? Hi Clinton.
There you go.
Clinton has been named Assistant Principal at W High School. Congratulations. You want to introduce your family, please?
I've got my wife Sheri, this is my daughter Bryn, and this is my other daughter.
You have a beautiful family. Congratulations.
Very well behaved, by the way.
We certainly wish each of you. We wish each of you well in your new positions.
And for those of you that just came for this portion of it, you may leave if you'd like.
You're going to miss a lot if you leave.
A lot of exciting things.
And moving along on our agenda, the next item is consideration and possible approval of proposed non-renewal of the term contract of Sarah Sanford, Teacher at the Summit, effective at the end of the 2016-17 school year.
Madam President, I move to accept and adopt the superintendent's recommendation to propose the non-renewal of the term contract of Sarah Sanford, Teacher at the Summit, as presented and discussed in executive session, and further move that Ms. Sanford be provided notice by the superintendent of this board's action.
Marshall, did you second? Seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The motion passes. The next item in the book is Certified Personnel, and it is for information only. Moving right along to the Educational Section of our agenda, consideration and possible approval for the adoption of the Board Resolution Regarding the Repeal of the A- through F Accountability Rating System for the Texas Public Schools.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Is there any discussion?
I just want to let you know, board members, you'll be joining over 300 districts thus far in passing a resolution like this to repeal the A- through F accountability. We in Pasadena ISD are not scared of accountability in no way, shape, or form, but the system is flawed, as you've learned through your training, and of course, information provided to you.
So, did I move, did I make the motion yet? You made the motion, Mr. Kendrick. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion is carried. And we will execute that resolution today and forward it on. The next item, consideration and possible approval of Professional Development Services titled Math Make and Take, Star Review 2017, from an inter-local agreement with Region 4 Education Service Center.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing none. The motion is carried. The next item is consideration and possible approval for students' EOC course grade to be recalculated for students who fail the EOC course and pass the EOC exam by earning 33% for passing EOC exam.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
Karen, would you mind filling this in for us?
And you're going to do a little history lesson, too, as well? I'm expecting.
I'll give you everything you want.
Thank you.
So Joyce worked really hard on this recommendation. When we first went into the EOC pattern, they were predicting, or they had recommended 15 EOCs to have to pass to graduate. And so at that point, Dr. Billy Smith recommended that if they passed the EOC, then they would get credit for the course, even if they had not passed the course. Because there was the fear and the thought that we would have a lot of kids who would begin stacking up with the need of those 15 EOCs to be able to graduate. So you guys passed that and approved that. That didn't end up happening. We only have the five EOCs. And there is the thought that with the five EOCs, there's many teachers and the building principals who had concerns over the kids really not taking the course seriously, because if they just passed the EOC, they would be able to get credit for the course. Also, the EOCs, unfortunately, the passing standard at the high school level is extremely low. So, the English 1, you have to get a 61% to pass. English 2, a 64%. Biology, 37%. U.S. History, 41%. And Algebra 1, 37%. We did not feel like that that's really an adequate showing of mastery of the skill. So, there's a balancing act that we tried to get to, that if kids got to a certain level, which we went to 55% after a lot of discussion between Joyce and the principals and the counselors, that, excuse me, if the kids had a 55% at the end of the course, that the EOC would combine with that and allow them to get credit for the course. If they got, which amounted to 33% of the grade. If they got less than a 55, then they would have to do credit recovery work and show mastery at a higher level in order to get that credit. Joyce, do you want to add anything to that?
All I can say is, when we first put this rule into effect, we really thought the standards, the state, we're going to change the standards each year and rise them, and it wouldn't have affected us as much. We were just giving too many students credit that we're not really doing any type of work. And the teachers were really getting a little frustrated, because they were just getting on and passing on. And we're so much about college readiness right now, that we want to make sure that our students are doing what they need to be doing, and that I can code it properly, and it gets put on the transcript correctly. And anyone that asks us, I'll be able to tell them, we have a formula in place, and this is how our students are getting credit.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great job.
Oh, last thing, I'm sorry. And the principals did say that they may want to phase this in, so we may want to raise the standard a little higher within a few years. They just want to see what happens as things go through, and see what happens with our standards, so.
Very good.
Starting point.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the presentation as presented?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. The next item is consideration and possible approval of the Shared Service Agreement for the Tri-County East Regional Day School Program for the DEF and the 2016-17 services.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing none. The motion is passed. The next item is consideration and possible approval of the School Affiliation Agreement between Pasadena ISD and Memorial Hermann Southeast Hospital.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion?
It's a pretty neat program. Kids get to really experience everyday life in a.
Clinical rotations and everything.
In an excellent hospital.
Yes.
So that's great.
I took advantage of that in my time.
Did you really?
Great. It was very educational.
And we're told in medical meetings that there will be a shortage of medical personnel in the next few years, so it's great that we're making this available. Is there any more questions or discussions? Hearing none. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is carried. Next item is consideration and possible approval of the sole source purchase with Educational Testing Services, ETS, for the 2016-17 school year.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is carried. Next item is consideration and possible approval of the sole source purchase for our annual renewal of the Chancery Student SMS Systems Maintenance with Power School.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. When does this contract start?
Mr. Allen, do you have a start date for this renewal?
No. I don't really know the start date right offhand. You know, I'll have to get back to you on it.
Okay.
We are looking at a new product. So where are we at in that process?
Well, we're starting to have meetings next week with the finding vendors that we're considering, because we'll be moving away from Chancery like that. So this will be our last cycle of Chancery. And our plan right now is to start with the new system when school starts. So one might ask the question, why? Why are we renewing? Well, you get into a situation, well, my experience has shown is that when you get ready to leave these companies, if you shorten your contract, first of all, you don't really get a discount. And then you run into the situation that if something happens in your implementation, then you're choice again at a premium, because you leave, you see? And then we also want to be sure that we have all of our data out of their system, you know, before we're out of the contract relationship.
That's great. Well, when we started with Chancery, we had a myriad of problems. And so, you know, I'm glad that you're doing this, because.
I'm familiar with Chancery.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With this?
How long a contract will this be? Didn't we have an issue about contracts and the extension of it?
Is this one year?
This is a one-year contract.
Well, I suppose that we need it until we're sure that the new program is going to work, as we anticipate.
It's just prudent to not have those shortcut offs, you know, hard cutoffs when you're dealing with software, because a number of things can happen. And like I said, the thing I'm most concerned about is historical data. Because oftentimes, when you do a conversion, you'll get X amount of historical data, but there may be some problem as you go back year after year after year. And then we have to take, we have to put together like a side project to now convert that data. And the goal will be that when you finally do it, we don't want to get in a situation where we're still maintaining Chancery data for so many years, because we have to. And then we maintain a new system at the same time.
Good business decision.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other question before we take the vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is carried. Consideration and possible approval of a contract with the City of Houston Mayor's and a gang task force.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
I think this is a great idea. I think that, I know years in the past, many of us can look back and see the time when we closed our eyes and said we didn't have a problem, and then the problem got bigger. And so I think being more aggressive and, you know, getting right in there and joining this task force, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great, excellent idea.
Any other comments or discussions?
Where are we seeing, are we seeing gang activity all over the district, or just is there a certain area more so than other? Or is that a question for?
Probably that would be more for our sergeant in the back, but I think it's probably creeped back up in North Pasadena, from what I've heard. But if you want to come forward, I know you love this, but we have everyone on the microphone. You're going to be like, Stuart, do you ever talk at these things?
We wait till it's your turn.
It's going to be different. I may not ever be, you may never see any of that. We have had some incidences where the City of Houston Mayor's Task Force has actually come out, gave some briefings and stuff like that. There's been incidents that are directly involved with some of our people, and there's some things that are actually outside that, due to the connections that they do have in the district, it's just kind of ongoing things that are going on. We've had problems in the South Belt area, and we've also started to see a resurgence of it.
Are they tagging the walls still, or?
Not as much as they used to.
Yeah, they used to.
It's more actual criminal activity.
Oh, there.
That's arising in the South Belt area with robberies and stuff like that. It was nothing that was happening on campus, but it was tied to our students.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don't leave. We may have some more stuff.
All in favor of the contract that we've discussed, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's passed. Consideration and possible approval of resolutions for the Summit Juvenile Intervention Program and the Tegler Youth Intervention Initiative for the 2017-2018 school year.
So move.
Did we have a revision on that one, Hope? Does she need to read it? Does she need to read it? I know it wasn't on her sheet, but we'll read it as the revised. This one right there. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
We had a last-minute revision, so it's just leaving out Tegler.
Okay. I'm sorry, we'll start over on that one. Consideration and possible approval of a resolution for the Summit Juvenile Intervention Program for the 2017-18 school year.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion is carried. The next item is the goodie one. It's consideration and possible approval of multiple grant awards.
I move that we approve the grants totaling $8,000.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Is there any discussion?
I just want to know how those stand-up desks are going to work with those fourth graders. That should be interesting.
I bet.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is carried.
Ground Department always working.
Student achievements is on page 226 through 237. Our students accomplished so much and what we saw tonight is just a minute part of it. We don't have any policies, updates, or reviews for today, and so we move to the financial section. Consideration and possible approval of budget amendments.
Move that we approve the budget amendments.
For November 2016. Motion by Mrs. Morgan.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's passed. The next one is consideration and possible approval of budget amendments for December 2016.
So move.
Mrs. Morgan made the motion and it's seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The motion is carried. If you remember, we did not have a called stated board meeting for the month of December. So that's why we're approving, backdating these items. The next item is consideration and possible approval of the interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement with Santa Fe Independent School District.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? I assume this is working well, John?
This one is working very well.
Great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's carried. The next item is consideration and possible approval of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for 2015-16 school year.
I move that we approve the financial report.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Roberts.
And we do have a presentation. We have representatives, auditors from Weaver and Tidwell here, Shelby Lockey and Debbie Young. So they're going to come forward in case you have any questions about the report you received with your materials. And do you all want to present from here? Or you can come over here if that's more comfortable? Okay. They've got a brief presentation just to share some highlights with you from the report.
I believe you should all have a presentation like this in front of you. I'm Shelby Lockey, as introduced. I've been with Weaver, formerly Hartford Lynch, almost for a year now. We've been merged. I've been with Hartford Lynch for almost 18 years, which is kind of crazy to think about. With me is Debbie Young. She is a partner with Weaver, formerly Hartford Lynch as well, and she's been here longer than me. I'll just leave it at that. She'll be thankful for that. I want to go ahead and thank John and Anna and Nina and Bethany. They've done a great job of getting us what we need when we get here. They're very cordial, all of the departments that work around them as well. When we come in, they have everything ready for us and we greatly appreciate that because so many times we come in and visit people and they're not so happy to see us. So we're thankful for that. I'll start on the first page of the presentation. In the top section, you'll see a page that references the actual hard copy CAFRA, if you wanted to look at that. The statement of activities, for the government-wide statements, is, I'll start by telling you a little bit, that is a full accrual balance sheet, so to speak, of the district, which is done once a year. So those are not the financial statements that you would normally look at. So when you look down at net position, down at the bottom of the page, of $355 million, that's not general fund, fund balance. They didn't lie to you. That's really not fund balance. So there's a difference in a measurement focus there. You'll see full assets and liabilities on this statement. So I'll flip over to the next page. Your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the general fund. That is the general operating fund of the district. We had a total of $479 million in revenues, mainly from state and local funds. You had total expenditures of $472.9 million, mainly your instruction and student support services. You paid out some refunds to taxpayers of $1.1 million, increasing fund balance by $4.9 million, bringing it up to a total of $102.9 million. Some general fund highlights. Unassigned fund balance is about 13% of annual expenditures, so you're meeting your standard that the board has set. General administration is a total of 2.48% of total expenditures, which is a little bit less than the state average. On the next page, you can see your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the debt service fund. The debt service fund is where those property tax monies and most of the time some state monies get set aside to pay your bonded debt. You can see you had $52 million in revenues, mainly local and some state. Expenditures of $56 million for principal and interest payments. You also paid some tax refunds out of this fund for $310,000, decreasing this fund balance by $4.3 million. And the majority of that, you did have a cash deficiency this year, so you used debt service cash to actually pay down some bonds. The next page is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the capital projects fund. When you issue bonds, that money is set aside into this fund to do those capital expenditures that you all have planned on for those bond proceeds. Total revenues are some interest of $1 million and then capital outlay of $34.9 million, decreasing fund balance by $33.9 million, which is what we would expect. Statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for your non-major funds. Those non-major funds are basically your local, state, and federal grants. And for the most part, those revenues come in and go out within the same period. You can see you had total revenues of $79.6 million, mainly federal programs. Expenditures of $78.9 million, mainly instruction and student support services, increasing fund balance by $788,000. Page 158 is my favorite page of the audit report. If you leave here today and knew somebody was going to ask you a question, how did your audit go? That would be the page you wanted to look at. It's the executive summary, so to speak. Your opinion on the basic financial states, statements. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, and also the highest level of assurance that can be given on a set of financial statements. We also audited your financial statements in accordance with government auditing standards, also called a yellow book audit. And we issued no material weaknesses and noted no significant deficiencies. So kudos to your business department. The next page talks about some more summaries of results. You all expend $750,000 or more in federal grant money, so you're required to have a single audit, also called EDGAR, Uniform Guidance, those type of audits. And we issued a clean opinion there as well. The major program we've tested this year was child nutrition and we, again, did not see any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We would entertain any questions anybody might have.
Great report, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that very much.
On that last report, the claim, what was that amount?
If the district spends $750,000 or more in federal monies, they're required to have a single audit.
I think you make this succinct compared to the thick book.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're very proud of our business.
Yeah, easier.
Yes.
Our business, they do a great job.
They do.
Very good.
Is there any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you both.
And special thanks to our financial department for having the information ready for them. We appreciate that, and they do too. Is there any more discussion on this subject?
Awesome work, y'all.
Absolutely.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion is carried. The next item is consideration and possible approval of investment brokers and dealers to engage in investment transactions with the district.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is carried. Consideration and possible approval of a resolution concerning investment policy and investment strategy review.
I move that we approve the resolution.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion's passed. And we move right along to our operations section. Consideration and possible approval of blanket electrical service easement for the Early College Annex at Pasadena Memorial High School Project.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, no. The motion is carried. Consideration and possible approval of HVAC testing and air balancing, TBA, services agreement for the Early College Annex at Pasadena Memorial High School Project.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is carried. Item three. Consideration and possible approval of HVAC testing and air balancing, TAB, services agreement for the Early College Annex at South Houston High School Project.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is carried. Number four. Consideration and possible approval of the HVAC testing and air balancing, TAB, services agreement for the Early College Annex at Sam Rayburn High School.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is passed. The next item is consideration and possible approval of the allowance expenditure authorization, AEA, number 006 for the New Dobie High School Ninth Grade Campus Project.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez.
What is the credit for deleted books theft equipment? What is that?
Kevin? It's the CPR number 22.
That's the book theft system that the library services used to have and all the libraries that since deleted that requirement so they know.
They don't put them in there anymore.
Put a little sensor on the book.
It's still in the project, so we've got a credit for it.
What is the, what's the credit for new City of Houston requirements? They lighten the load or what do they do?
Yeah, they used to require hammer arresters on all the lavatories, which they since said it was kind of overdesigned, so they don't require it anymore.
Thank you.
The electrical for the scoreboard, that's just the electrical?
Data and electrical.
Is that normal? That seems.
It's a long run. It's about, I think, 450 feet of trenching and conduit to get power out to that scoreboard, and that's why the price is so high.
And the scoreboard is already included in the original price?
It's in the project, yeah.
And I asked Kevin what that was today. It was about $9,000, right?
$9,200.
For the board itself.
They'd better be using it.
Just along, we have the largest numbers.
That's right.
Is there any other questions for Kevin?
Thanks, Karen.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Kevin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The motion's passed. The next item is consideration and possible approval for the Material Testing Services Agreement for the New Maysmith Elementary School Replacement Project.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
We go to bid on that February 2nd, correct?
Good.
Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's passed. And we move on to construction updates. Do we have any questions or comments from board members?
Getting a lot of comments at the school over there on Pequay and, what is that?
Monroe.
Monroe. What'd you say?
Monroe.
Cullen turns into, isn't it Cullen turns into Monroe?
Okay, well, anyway, I'm getting a lot of good comments about it.
Is that right? Looking back at the principals, is that right? Isn't that where I go to check on that building? Wrong building.
It's way on down, Cullen's on down.
He's shaking his head, yes.
He don't know.
Pearland Parkway.
Pearland Parkway.
I still get there.
Cullen's down there.
Okay, I still get there.
Just enlarged their district about three good miles.
They come to us anyway.
Oh, yeah.
The structure of the LF Smith is really taking place. It's different from the other schools in our district, but it's certainly going to be a great addition to the neighborhood. So we'll move on to miscellaneous section of the board book.
Madam President, since we, I overlooked during the personnel section, I'd like to recognize those that have retired or are retiring.
Sure.
Virginia Firstenberg from Bailey Elementary Physical Education. Her retirement date was 12/16/2016. 16 years in education, 13 with PISD. Sheila Strother or Struther, Golden Acres Elementary, 3rd grade. 25 years in education, 9 with PISD. And Edward Joffreyon, South Houston High, Special Ed Inclusion. 15 years in education, 9 with PISD. This is a new time in their lives. We certainly wish. We certainly wish them well in everything that they do from this point on. Hopefully, they'll get some rest.
Thank you for reporting that information. We don't have any public comments. Item number three. Consideration and possible approval of the election order and notice for the 2017 Pasadena Independent School District trustee election.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's carried. Item number four. Consideration and possible approval of the joint election agreement between the Pasadena Independent School District and San Jacinto College District.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Item number five is to set the date for the next regular meeting, which is suggested of Tuesday, February 21st, 2017.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's passed. Is there any other business to come before this board? We're going to reconvene into open session.
Close session.
Or a closed session. I'm sorry. We're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. Consider board members' self-evaluation. 551.071 to consult with the district's attorney concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Opens Meetings Act when the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer. Section 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And we will reconvene in open session when we are finished, and we will come back in here to adjourn.
Y'all don't need to wait.
Yes. Hi.
Y'all later. Hey, you haven't seen anyone?